5:45, so I will call to order the October, August, jumping ahead here, feels like October. August 7th, 2025, regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meetings with a silent invitation for people to prayer meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Your last words. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have two people signed up for general public comment this evening. Would appreciate if you could limit yourself to about five minutes or so. And when I call your name, if you'll come to the center and give your name and address for the clerk's record, we would appreciate that. First is R.A., is it Butovich?
Thank you. Today I read the article in the paper about how much--
If you could give your name and address.
Oh, I was 35, Tisholand.
Thank you.
Hendersonville. I've lived here for 12 years. I am a bridge player. And I saw where they estimate $5 to $8 million to tear down the building and put up a new building. I suggest you fix the old building and use most of that money to fix Patton Park and the other millions that that article mentioned that the city does not have. And oh, by the way, one other thing the city doesn't have, a senior center. I am a senior. Fifty percent of the people who live in Hendersonville are seniors, and there is nothing here for us. And oh, by the way, Whitmire Center is my voting station, and I would hate to lose that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brett Orner?
Good evening. Brett Orner, 706 Goldfinch Drive. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff, and fellow citizens. I am a member of the city's Board of Adjustment and employee of the state of South Carolina. The thoughts I share with you this evening are my own and not necessarily reflect the views of my employer or fellow board members. Parking access at public meetings. I'd like to advocate for free parking in front of the courthouse during county commission meetings or any public event that includes civic participation and comment. Removing any barriers that can be discouraged, that can discourage public engagement, however small, help foster a more involved and informed community, making our local democracy stronger and more inclusive. The Strategic Housing Planning Committee has only met three times this year out of the eight. I recognize a special session has been called for later this month. The housing challenges we face are urgent and require timely proactive attention. My property taxes increased roughly $240 this year. My homeowner's insurance jumped 40%, or I'm sorry, 30% and $310 this year. If these trends continue, especially compounding year over year, homeownership will become even more unattainable for more of our residents. Delaying solutions today risks a deeper affordability crisis tomorrow. If lack of corn is behind the committee's limited activity, then appointing new members should be on the table. There is growing public opposition to certain housing projects in town. More frequent meetings will lead to action and offer a valuable space for public input, education, and collaboration. The feedback can and should help guide future development in our community. Robinson Terrace Housing Authority, or the Housing Authority property Robinson Terrace. As a Green Meadows resident, I pass the Robinson Terrace property daily. It's disheartening and unacceptable to see it still sitting vacant with no visible changes, falling into disrepair. If the housing authority is awaiting FEMA reimbursement, which may never materialize, I urge the council to push for alternative solutions in the meantime. This could include exploring flood mitigation strategies or reimagining the site with a denser, more resilient layout. The longer this area sits vacant, the more unsavory and illegal activities continue to crop up, which divert our police resources from avoidable incidences. The community should not have to live with the uncertainty and trauma left in the wake of hurricane week. The Seventh Avenue sidewalk, and the Spinks property, regarding the grand quest you'll hear from later this evening along Seventh Avenue, the proposal does not clearly state whether improvements will be made on both sides of the street between Elm and Victor Air. If both sides are included, I urge the council to consider reallocating any funds designated within the Spinks property line towards either enhancing current project or extending the project from Ash, or from Elm to Ash Street, an equally distant stretch that would serve residents and pedestrians more effectively. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Orner, for serving on the committee and for your suggestions this evening.
Thank you, Madam.
You lost your seat.
That's fine.
First item of business is consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have added to or removed?
Mayor, sorry, there was somebody online that raised their hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you very much for your time. I was concerned I wasn't going to get in there. Um, Lynn Williams, Chad Avenue. So, the community we are watching. We're asking you, will you take a stand for our farmers with our local food economy and residents? Will you take a stand for our rural character and communities? Will you keep your word to honor the county's ag vision and ag plan? Will you honor the hundreds of hours our community-appointed farm leadership? Farmers and community members have sacrificed and invested in securing interlocal agreement in efforts to protect farmland, especially through annexation. Did you see the county mailer in the tax bill? The only other piece of paper in there, which included, you know, the city's taxes, the county's taxes, explaining that North Carolina was number two in farmland loss in the country. Will you, as individuals and elected representatives, protect our beloved, small, historic town of Hendersonville and surrounding farm communities? Have any members of this all-female council attended a county farmland preservation task force meeting in the past year? When you are at the apple festival, do you actually meet with our farmers? Food security and environmental resource protection is both a local and national security issue. For many of us with families from the area, farming is in the blood, passed on for generations. My great-great, great-grandparents, my great-greats, my greats, eight generations of ancestors of Henderson County have farmed here. It is irreplaceable, incredibly unique, fertile, water-filled, valuable region. We must work together to protect our home. Does Councilwoman Simpson still hold the opinion that the younger generation, including her own, doesn't want to farm or be farmers? Has she been to East High School, West High School, the forage clubs, the county extension center, Jackson Park? We see in last month's consent agenda that this body, City Council, approved bringing city services to the historic Thomas Farm that's been destroyed, 151 acres of historic farm community there. And also, I noticed that the Tracy Grove development, that you're sending water there, but yet, two years ago, I remember driving and photographing as the smoke rose from those apple orchards as they were burnt to the ground while some that I loved was dying. Decisions regarding farmland, rural areas, especially annexations and annexation rezoning, like especially for automatically rezoning to CHMU, Commercial Highway Mixed Use along upward road, can it be paused until review of the interlocal agreement with efforts to honor its purpose with emphasis on farmland and rural preservation? Can we wait until that agreement is solidified before we make these decisions? Did the commissioners do the right thing by trusting City Council with their word to protect and preserve farmland, farmers, and our farming legacy? Secondly, I just wanted to say, I do agree with the previous speaker about better access to public parking for city meetings. And also ensuring that there's enough room for all residents to attend meetings, especially the neighborhood compatibility meetings, the planning board, the city council meetings, and public hearings is essential, especially if publicly notified as required by the law. Though my recent experience at the Haywood Road neighborhood compatibility meeting was discouraging, I would like to thank the city staff for promising and organizing a second neighborhood compatibility meeting, I believe, August 18th at Blue Ridge Community College. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else?
No, Madam.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Okay, onto the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have added to or removed from the agenda or motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council through the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries, and we have our agenda. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Or not a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As have it, we got that. All right. We have a presentation this evening. Support Our Swimmers, Stephen Bradshaw from the committee.
Actually, the chair of our committee is Katie Breckheimer. She and I are both going to be presenting, kind of like flip-flopping a little bit. I'll let her introduce herself first.
Thanks, Steve. My name's Katie Breckheimer, and I'm the chair of Support Our Swimmers. We have been at this for a couple of years. I'm a lifelong swimmer, and I think everybody should share that skill in their lifetime.
I'm Steve Bradshaw. I've lived here for 27 years now, and I'm a lifelong swimmer, swim in college, and I'm the coach of West Henderson High School, where I'm told we've had 44 kids so far signed up for member swimming.
If we want to advance, who's doing the advance?
There's a little remote.
Oh, there it is. Thank you.
Hidden.
Yeah. So I'm also on the Henderson County Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. And about six years ago, we had a professional needs assessment done, and of the top five, a swimming pool was number five. We've done pretty well with the first four, which were about trails and hiking and walking, and we're just delighted with the Acusta Trail. It's great. But the swimming pool was never addressed, and so that's when Support Our Swimmers got involved and started looking seriously at what do we do to get a swimming facility They're coming. We know they're coming. We see them every day. There are babies and elderly people, there's young families and retirees, and they're all going to need to exercise, and they're all going to need swimming lessons and recreation. So this slide is kind of what we're going to talk about tonight, and the needs, I'll just read them. I know that's not kosher, but I just think it's important that we run through the needs here. We need lap swimming facilities. We need competitive swimming space, a place for masters swimming. We need to host swim meets. We need to teach kids and older adults how to swim. We need water aerobics classes, kayak safety training, scuba training, deep water rescue training, physical therapy, birthdays and celebrations, and just plain old family fun. Our community's been talking about pools and what we should build and how big or small they should be, and nothing's written in stone for us. But one thing that we've done in the last couple of years is visit three western North Carolina swimming facilities, and we're going to talk about them a little bit later in our PowerPoint. But all the three had two pools. One, a cool pool for lap swimming and competition, and then a warm pool for swim lessons and recreation. Steve?
Yeah. All right. This is, you know, what was Patton Pool lacking? You know, we started this board to get a new pool well before Helene. Patton Pool's over 50 years old. It's, you know, it's outdoor, meaning we can only use it for less than three months. We, you know, really would like to have an indoor 50-meter pool. On the previous slide, there's a thing called a bulkhead. That's a bridge that is movable, so we can have swim practice and learn to swim. We can have water aerobics, and we can have lap swimming all at the same time, and that bridge actually moves, it kind of divides up the pool in half. I was going to save this for later, but this is, this picture right here is the Martin Luther King Pool down in Charleston, South Carolina, and this is a glass cover on the pool. So it kind of covers about 10% at each end, and one of the pool has a retractable area to cover it. And they open that whenever the temperature is 70 degrees and above. My wife would really like to swim laps outdoors. So this is probably when we get to the point of a final pool and we can't raise the money, this may be an option, also because it's a less expensive option to have an indoor 50-meter pool. And it also has the best of both worlds of being an outdoor pool when you want and an indoor pool when you need it. You know, an outdoor pool is only good for the summer, and it's no good for our swim So, you know, we get to use the pool 12 months instead of just three months. And then high school swimming, an outdoor pool like Patton is no good to us because our swim practices aren't from November to February, our swim meets and all that. And then also, little kids can do their learn-to-swim in a controlled environment, not freezing in the morning at Patton Pool. Drowning is the number-one cause of accidental death for kids aged 1 to 4 in the United States. A community with access to an aquatic facility is safer, stronger, and healthier, and early swim lessons can decrease drowning deaths by 88%. That's Department of Health statistics. Our county started this thing called the Second Safety Around Water Program, and that is a fantastic program, but it's not really enough. We should go further into drown-proofing our kids. Public access, as well as, you know, Boys and Girls Club, Salvation Army, they have relied on Patton Pool for swim lessons, and we don't have that anymore. Our county only has two indoor facilities, and neither one are suitable for competition. We, there's not enough deck space, they're not really deep enough, so we can't host any meets in Henderson County. And both of those indoor pools are private, so they require a membership, so that may leave economically challenged kids out in the cold and less, given less of a chance to learn to swim, and may be more at risk to drowning than kids and families that can afford memberships. And by the way, can I go backwards? That guy right there, you probably recognize the guy on the left, that's Michael Phelps. And that's known as the most famous and really in history. The black guy in that picture, African-American, is Koolin Jones, who swam at NC State. He learned to swim because he had a near-death drowning when he was very, very young, and he, his mother put him in swimming lessons with the Boys and Girls Club. He's the most decorated African-American swimmer in history, so, and I'm proud because I was an NC State swimmer as well. Couldn't guess.
Okay, so I'm going to talk to you guys about our field trips. The first place we went was the city of Waynesville, and what we wanted to do in going to western North Carolina communities was that they're close to us, and they also are similar to us, but they have fewer people than we do. So if they have pools, we want one. So the town of Waynesville is a city-owned and operated facility. It's the oldest one we saw. It was built in 2000. It was in the planning stages for quite a while. None of these happened overnight. I think what's happened with us is the urgency of replacing Patton Pool. But the communities we visited talked about building pools for a while. So it was also a rec center that has a gymnasium and weight room, and what you're seeing is the competition pool and their dividers. There's like a movable screen that separates the warm recreation pool further in the background, and they do have one water slide. The cost for this recreation center was $65 million. It was a public-private partnership. The community came together, individuals contributed, governments contributed, corporations contributed. That's kind of what we see for us, that nobody can build it by themselves. It's very costly, but partnerships are important. I think you guys have already determined that you would need partners if we want to do something big for Patton Pool. They called it a golden shovel campaign, and so that's what they've got, and they've enjoyed it for quite a while now. The next place we went was the Watauga Recreation Center located in Boone. Again, it was two pools, and it's county-owned and operated. It opened in 2021, and the commissioners paid for it, the whole design and build, out of their general funds. So what we found was, at every place we went, it was paid for a little differently. In the slides, the upper-left corner, you can see the two water slides that they have at the rec, at the rec pool, and then in the lower-left slide, that's the competition pool, and you can see the, they have permanent seating, permanent bleachers there. It was a really beautiful facility. Last--
What was the cost on the Watauga?
I don't have that figure for you, but I can get it. The last place we visited was the Cullowhee Pool at the Jackson County Aquatic Center. It's owned and operated by Jackson County. It was the newest pool that we visited in January of 2025 it opened. The project moved up their Parks and Rec master plan until it got to the top, and they said, well, I guess we better, I guess we better address this, guess we better build it, and they did. They added it to an existing rec center. The cost of the pool facility was $22 million. It was placed on the ballot as a bond referendum. So water has this wonderful quality of supporting us, supporting our bodies, supporting our, our, all of us, the outside and the inside. So it's great for therapy, for broken bones, for mending almost anything that's wrong with you, to tell you the truth. The Hardy Rehab Center has a very small pool. I don't know whether you knew that, it's in the rehab center across from the mall. When I talked to the therapist there, she said, oh, gosh, if we just had more places I can send people, because they can do a little bit with me, but they need to continue that therapy in a pool situation, and we just don't have those facilities. In the lower picture, you can see the water size. That's very popular. We don't have the facilities we need for the demand for all the people who want that kind of low-impact water size. This is our friend Mary Davis. She's here. She's hiding behind me right now, poor thing. Mary's very active. Mary swims every day, but when Patton Pool went kaput, Mary was not happy and couldn't find places to swim like she needed to. Mary is an ambassador for our senior games program. She was in the finals in Raleigh for swimming, and you can see she's sporting her medals there. I know Mary loves to exercise. She loves to be fit, but she also does it for her health. I know this. There are other swimmers in our audience. If you're a swimmer and here for us today, would you raise your hands, please? Raise both hands, would you?
We could have gotten more.
And we told them to wear their goggles and bring a towel.
T-shirts are good enough.
Next time. Thanks, everybody. Oh, there you are.
All right. This is our team. This is mine and Kelly Littauer's team. And this is one of the four high schools in Henderson County that is lucky enough to have a swim team. The other two, so Hendersonville has a team, West Henderson has a team. Nothing for North and nothing for East, because there is no pool space for them. We have so far 44 kids signed up for our team this year, and we never get that many this early, so we're very excited. We fit, that picture is last year's team, 39 kids in three lanes at the Y. Sometimes they'll give us a fourth, but we need more space for our high school swim teams. There is only one middle school that has a team, and there could be a lot more. And the coach of the middle school, the rugby middle school is here as well, and that is a fantastic program for teaching kids to swim, swim at a higher level. This year, I'm gonna, I still swim. I'm getting depressingly slow, but I'm going to go to Masters Nationals. That's going to be 3,000 swimmers in Greensboro, and all of those people are going to go to a four-day meet there. And that is a fantastic meet with a 50-meter pool that they built for about $20 million. Swimming is truly a lifelong sport. It's the, it's kind of, when you can't run anymore, you might bike, and when you can't do either one of those anymore, swimming is a great option. At this meet I'm going to go to, there's going to be multiple 90-year-olds, and there will always be one or two centenarians swimming, getting up on the blocks, maybe, maybe pushing off, but they're competing, and it's a fantastic thing to see. This is actually Greensboro's pool. They call it the GAC, the Greensboro Aquatic Center. Might be a better acronym out there. Cary, Greensboro, Huntersville, Charlotte, and Kingsport all have aquatic centers that bring in millions, truly millions, by hosting meets. In fact, they have a formula they use for economic impact. Greensboro brings in $25 million per year by hosting swim meets, and so they take the number of athletes multiplied by 2.3 or give or take, and then they have a figure of however many hotels and restaurants and retail that they have. A 25-yard competition would be great. Competition pool would be great, and that would put us even with all these other pools that Katie showed you. And we could compete for some of these meets where we bring in out-of-town people for, that would add to our economic impact. If we had a 50-meter pool, we would not have to compete for all these meets. We would get them all. We would, we have two masters programs in the area. The YMCA has a masters program, and there's one up at Asheville School. The YMCA has a masters program and there's one up at Asheville School. They would probably each host a meet, a multi-day meet. The YMCA is the, you know, the Western YMCA is the largest team and they would probably host three meets a year. Each of those would probably bring in 300, 400 kids, plus their parents, family, siblings, and so forth. And then there's also the Asheville Blues. And we were even told by UNCA, who has a women's swimming team, that we could be in the rotation for the Southern Conference if we had a state-of-the-art 50-meter pool. That's really all I had. We're really thankful that you let us come and speak to the group and that you let everybody be heard. It's a really important thing that you guys do this forum.
And in closing, we want to offer our partnership. I know you're looking for partners. We strongly believe this can be done as a public-private partnership. The county is going to send people to our pool. The city's going to send people to our pool. We need to work together. We have taken measures to open a designated fund at the community foundation and we're about to announce our first major donor in October. So please think of us as your partner. I would love to show you some of these pools that we visited. So close. It's an afternoon trip. We can do it. So please let me know if you'd like me to set up a field trip for you to go see these pools. You won't, you just don't get it until you go and see. So thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate all of you coming.
You don't have to stay unless you really want to. You can scoot out.
All right. Your wonders are excused.
You have to go swim.
It's bursting fish and an overflowing vat. Can anyone imagine a level?
Okay. Start to our first public hearing. This is to consider incentives for Project Energize.
Is it ready?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. It's with great pleasure that I get to introduce this public hearing. We have an economic development project for you to consider tonight. It's called Project Energize. As you know, economic development projects are highly competitive and very often the companies aren't ready to announce who they are at this stage. So we have been given the opportunity to offer incentives to hopefully attract this company to come to the city. Just by way of a little bit of background for the public and just as a refresher, the city's authorized to engage in economic development activities by the North Carolina general statutes. And you have to find that it will increase either population, taxable property, agricultural industries, employment, industrial output, or business prospects of the city or the county. And I've highlighted taxable property and employment because those are the primary things that with an industry that you do tend to consider when you're considering granting economic development incentives. You did adopt, City Council adopted guidelines to serve as a policy that can be taken when the partnership is out recruiting so that people can kind of have an idea of what they might qualify for. Just a couple of points, before anybody can qualify, they have to make a minimum capital investment of at least $1.5 million that would be taxable in real or personal property. They have to create full-time jobs that pay at or above the median industrial wage, which for this year is $51,565. So they have to pay at least that much. For each year that they make investments, they typically would receive five years of incentive payments. And the incentive payments are basically a percentage of the taxes, the real property taxes that they would pay to the city based on the number of jobs created and wages paid. And I've got a slide for that. And then we have to enter into an incentives agreement so that they promise, we have an enforceable promise from them to actually make the investment and create the jobs in order to qualify for the funds. This is how the economic incentives payments are determined. And so there are, you get a certain number of points for the number of jobs created and a certain number of points for the percentage of the average median wage. So if you go above the average median wage, you can qualify for a higher percentage. And so I'm going to introduce Brittany Brady. She's the president and CEO of the partnership. They have done the work to bring this facility to the city. And so Brittany, if you want to come and...
Thank you. And it's an honor to be here. It's always fun to talk economic development, but it feels so much sweeter after September 27th. So Project Energize is, and you're seeing the investment over four years. This is a public global company. They are also an energy solutions company. They have 80 manufacturing and technical locations across the world. So this is a well-known and established entity. And they have 20 locations in the United States and including some in North Carolina. The company is considering establishing a 220,000-square-foot manufacturing facility to launch production of a clean energy product. The technology will impact the multiple industries, allowing customers to not have to depend on a single fuel supply chain. The process will utilize Industry 4.0. The company is considering a location in Henderson County within the city of Hendersonville. They will lease a newly constructed 220,000-square-foot building estimated at nearly $18 million and invest $57 million in business personal property. The total project investment will be $75,300,000. The project would create 193 new positions with an average wage exceeding $78,000 annually. This does classify for the 120% threshold as, as people walk through. And you can see that the total incentive for the life of the project would be north of $1.9 million with 196,000 in year one. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about Project Energize.
Brittany, I know you've explained this to me before, but will you talk about how the average wage is calculated?
Sure. So the average wage is actually calculated, the 51,000 number that was put in for you, these are, this is state statute. So we have to follow that average wage across all the counties. So the 51,565 is calculated at the state level for every job in our community. The lowest entry job to the highest-paying professional in our community is wrapped into that number. And any incentives that we give have to be higher than that. So for a company like this, when you're getting this $78,000, that's also considering every single job code. A lot of times there's questions that come in about, or is somebody's salary swaying that? Or it's truly not. When you have 193 jobs, to be competitive, you're going to have to pay well over that 51,000 number. When you have Industry 4.0, you're going to be hiring the best and the brightest individuals in our county. And so that's when you get to a number of 78,000. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Nobody has signed up in person to speak. Is there...
I'm sorry.
Thank you for your time. Lynn Williams, Chawick Avenue. So I wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Brady and for all her hard work. We did have a meet and read one time at the bookstore and you helped me understand better your mission and goals and I appreciate what you do for our community. Thank you. And then moving along, so you know, I'm thankful for the interest in investing in Hendersonville and Henderson County. Once again, my concern with the sort of like undisclosed what the company is going to be and what the output will be as far as environmentally, that's my concern here. I've said it to the county before and I've said it to, I believe, here to the city. You know, we want to be behind these types of initiatives, but our concern is just, you know, what will the output be in our community? Will it affect our water? Will it pollute our air? So this is really important when we consider what's coming here because I mean, even e-waste, for example, can be really toxic to our community. So it'd be great if we could have some greater transparency so we could have more informed perspectives on how as a community we could respond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes?
I apologize for not signing up, Madam Mayor. I'm Breword, 706 Goldfinch Street. I heard 200-square-foot newly constructed facility. Would a better incentive be to utilize an existing structure within the city? Or is that, if that is viable, could an incentive be put in place to utilize an existing structure like your Print Pack facility as opposed to construction view facility? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone online?
No, not here.
Okay. We'll close that public hearing. Counsel, want to respond or discussion or a motion?
I will make a motion and I'll just make a comment ahead of this. I don't remember exactly what the original commitment that Jable Industries committed to Henderson County, but I think that they have quadrupled now their initial economic investment into our county and community. I know many people who have very good paying jobs, great health insurance benefits, and you know, bringing more types of jobs like this to our community is going to help people's quality of life. And so I'm excited to support this project. Anybody else want to make a comment before I...
They can still make a comment after.
Okay. And then may I move the City Council per the monetary incentives for Project Energize as presented with conditions that they will not exceed the total amount of 1.966268.57.
Okay. Thank you. Now, is there any further discussion? Now, those in favor of approving the incentives for Project Energize, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and those incentives have been approved. All right. Next, we have a public hearing for an annexation at 412 Nick Murray Road. It's tomorrow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council. So we have been in contact with the applicant for this annexation request. So due to some changes with the inter-local agreement, they have asked to continue or open and continue this public hearing to next month, just to allow them more time to speak with Henderson County about their zoning options and what they could do if they were annexed and just iron out some of those details before getting annexed.
Okay. So they did request that the public hearing be opened?
Correct. Opened and continued, just so we...
Okay. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
We will open that public hearing if someone would like to move to continue it to next
I don't think we're actually taking any comments today.
Yeah, we're continuing the hearing. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move that we continue this public hearing to our September meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Now, those in favor of continuing this public hearing to the next month, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Let's have it, motion carries and we will take this up next month. All right. Then we have an ETJ relinquishment for Vulcan Lands Incorporated.
Yes, thank you very much. So the city is receipt of an ETJ removal request made by Vulcan Lands Incorporated. So the map on the screen shows the parcels in their entirety. You can see the bottom kind of pink hashed area is the area of the subject property that's within the city limits. So altogether, the subject property is roughly 90 acres, but there are 16.12 acres that are within the city's ETJ. One parcel, the larger parcel, is zone C3 Howie Business and the smaller portion on the right is zone R15. The remaining portion, of course, is in the county's jurisdiction and it is zoned currently industrial. So it's my understanding that Vulcan has asked for this ETJ removal just so they can operate under one land use code and one set of rules. And currently, the city also doesn't have a use that would reflect the use that they're currently using out there and Henderson County does. So they would like to request that they be removed from the ETJ just so they can follow under the county's jurisdiction. Denise Hallett with Vulcan is also here. If you have any questions of them, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Y'all may have many.
Hallett, if you'd like to make a presentation before we open the public hearing, go ahead.
Good evening. As Tyler said, I'm Denise Hallett and I manage community and government relations for Vulcan. Our operations in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Southern Virginia. With me tonight is Todd Miller, who's our Vice President and General Manager for North Carolina. Steve Jetter is our Area Operations Manager and Tom Cathy is our Area Sales Manager. Thank you for allowing me to make some brief remarks about this request. As you know, Vulcan Materials, or as you may know, Vulcan Materials is the largest crushed stone producer in the United States. But we don't do that just here in Hendersonville. We operate over 400 quarries, sand and gravel, and distribution sites in 23 states, Mexico, Canada, and the Bahamas. And we're also a major producer of asphalt and ready-mixed concrete in other states. Essentially, our rocks build your community. When we host quarry tours, I tell our visitors that you can't build anything without a rock. And it's true. Key examples of how our stone is used in the community are in asphalt, where 95% of the asphalt mix is all crushed stone, and in ready-mixed concrete, where 80% or more of the mix is all crushed stone. And if you were to drive in one lane mile of Interstate 26, you would be on top of 38,000 tons of crushed stone. And that would be from our quarry here in Hendersonville. And as I've stated in our application, the Hendersonville Quarry has been operating since the 1960s, prior to any city or county zoning. The site is regulated by several state agencies, including NCEQ Mining, Air, and Water, as well as federal agencies, including the Army Corps of Engineers and the Mining Safety Health Administration. Our entire site covers nearly 236 acres. Our operations generate an economic impact for the communities and Hendersonville is no exception, contributing over $33 million in sales, wages, taxes, and utilities in 2024 alone. We employ 22 at our Hendersonville Quarry, earning well above the minimum wage and the average industrial wage that was talked about earlier. Our community outreach has supported many nonprofits and educational programs over these years. I will note that our teams here in Hendersonville and surrounding Western North Carolina operations have been actively involved in the Western North Carolina Hurricane Helene Recovery, supplying stone to rebuild the infrastructure and contributing resources to nonprofits that are helping residents restore their homes. Now, tonight, I'm talking about a small portion of, 15-acre portion of our site that's been operating under a state mining permit prior to city or county zoning, and it's in the ETJ. We also acquired an adjacent parcel in 2021, and that small portion that Tyler talked about, less than an acre, is also in the city's ETJ. We're requesting tonight that the city release these approximately 16 acres from your ETJ, which is going to allow our team to develop the site under one set of land use regulations. We do look forward to continued investments in our operations... We do look forward to continued investments in our operations that's going to provide essential building materials and maintain our outreach programs for many years to come. I just want to thank you for your time and consideration and I and my team are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Hallett?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
Open that public hearing. Uh, we had no additional people sign up for this. Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you for your time. While I'm here, I might as well just knock them all out. Lynn Williams, Chabuk Avenue. Um, in this particular situation, um, I look at what's left here of the land, um, you know, and what I've heard from the residents, like literal booms, random booms, like, um, I've noticed, and then also they say, oh, have you noticed that giant hole in the ground when you look at the satellite photos next to I-26? So these are the ways that the community that I've known also Vulcan to present themselves to our residents. Um, and then I'm hearing, this was here prior to city or county zoning existing. So thank you for the economic impact you bring, $33 million and 22 employees, good paying jobs. Thank you for that. Um, and with the Vulcan leadership here, we would respectfully ask for you to consider any potential growth impacts on our community and on the land. You know, can you develop this land in a way that it does protect some of those trees? Um, you know, some of the ordinances you might be skirting by moving out of, um, our EJT might be some tree ordinances, things like that. If you could please consider that, that's important to us. Um, so yeah, that's the main things. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Is there anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close that public hearing. Counsel, discussion, motion?
Madam Mayor, I move city council to adopt the ordinance, amend the ordinance of establishing extraterritorial jurisdiction boundaries for the city of Hendersonville as presented.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the ETJ relinquishment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries and it's been taken care of. Thank you. Okay, now we move on to new business. And again, you are welcome to stay or you are welcome to, to the, if you wish. Uh, this is an annexation analysis and advisement, 143 Thumper Woods Lane.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, this annexation petition that the city received is for, uh, an extension of the Simple Life Farm development, um, in the, uh, Upper Road area. Uh, the, the property is located, as I mentioned, on our Upper Road, uh, east of I-26. It's a 10.21 acre site. Uh, the proposed use is for an RV or park model, uh, development where with 60 of these units being placed, uh, on the property and sold to individuals. Um, the land underneath would be retained in ownership by the developer and at least to the unit owners. That's how this, this model works. It would be for year round, uh, permanently living and the units would stay on the property. This project has actually already received zoning entitlements, uh, under the county, uh, through a special use permit. Um, the map on, uh, the screen here shows, um, the property is highlighted in red and the approximate distance from the corporate city limits is 10,424 feet as crow flies. As part of staff's evaluation of the proposed annexation, we have utilized a formula that's been devised to estimate the cost of providing city services in light of the anticipated tax revenue from the proposed development. Uh, and, and we're doing this in order to determine if there would be a net gain or deficit anticipated. So a major factor, just so everyone's aware, in, uh, the impacts and results of this analysis is the location. Uh, the location of the project is a major factor which drives the efficiency or inefficiency in the provision of, uh, city, in, in the provision of services. In this case, the proposed development would result in, uh, a cost, uh, more, would result in a, uh, to cost more to service than it would generate in tax revenue. Staff also took a look at the future land use designations in the respective, uh, county comprehensive plan and city comprehensive plan. Uh, both of these character areas, uh, recognize the, the rural area of the location. Uh, we also, in addition to analyzing the comprehensive plan designations, we also were looking at the zoning. Let's all run through both of these, uh, really quickly. Um, the development, uh, as it was approved is not in alignment with the Henderson County 2045 comprehensive plan for the area. Uh, the development, uh, does appear to be somewhat consistent with the city's Gen H comprehensive plan designation in that it provides naturally occurring affordable housing at a proposed density of 5.9 units per acre. Uh, it keeps 75% of the land in open space, but, uh, contrary, contrary to, um, the city's goals, it proposed, uh, almost 90% of the site would be impacted, uh, with land disturbance and it would result in significant impacts to the 100-year flood plane. Uh, and, and so that's, uh, comprehensive plan analysis for the future land use. The zoning comparison, under Henderson County, it is zone residential one, which has allowable uses, um, of residential dwellings, camps, camping, golf courses, schools, churches, et cetera. It allows a residential density of six units per acre with sewer, four units per acre without sewer. Under city Hendersonville, the most likely zoning district would be a PRD CZD, uh, conditional zoning district. The project has a density, I mentioned, of 5.9 units per acre, so it's under that 10 units per acre, uh, which is allowed under PRD. Um, but with the proposed units, proposed density, and with all the units being less than 1,200 square feet, this could be allowed, uh, as an R20 low density residential, minor PRD, but for the 50 unit trigger, uh, that automatically triggers that, um, conditional zoning. So again, the proposed use, uh, was approved through a special use permit in the county contingent on the provision of city sewer. Uh, without city sewer, the proposed density of 5.9 units per acre would exceed the maximum density allowed, um, under residential one, which is four units per acre. Another component to, uh, this annexation analysis that staff is performing that is new, that we're looking to introduce are these development impact statements. Um, and this is to reach out to service providers to get a determination of their observations of, um, and their insights on, on any perceived, uh, potential impacts from the development on their ability to provide services. So, um, staff reached out to all the city departments and outside agencies that are listed on the screen and asked them, uh, to provide that statement. Uh, the statements that are, um, provided on the screen, um, uh, are those that are, are provided. So you can, you can see those. I won't read through each of those. Um, but staff would welcome any comments that, that council may have on, um, how helpful this is or not, uh, as a, a new component to this analysis. And so, uh, just wrapping things up here, there are three options that you're aware of. Uh, the first one, annexation, uh, approval with the provision of city services, uh, all of city services. The, the project, uh, would proceed as presented under the county land use regulations and all city services would be, uh, provided. The second option would be the annexation is denied, but city services are provided. So the project proceeds as presented under the county land use regulations. No additional city services would be provided other than water and sewer. And then the third, annexation is denied with sewer not being provided, in which case the project would not be able to proceed under the county zoning. A modified project could proceed up to four units per acre under county zoning, uh, assuming, uh, that they're able to, uh, otherwise address the sewer receptive situation. So with that, uh, staff has, uh, motions available for your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Discussion?
So, if I may, Mayor, Mayor Bolt, members of city council, um, you know, planning staff will need typically just give you the analysis and do not give you the recommendation that leaves, they leave that to the city manager, uh, to, to put my foot in my mouth. But, uh, I will say that this particular site, as you saw in the analysis, is, um, and from Tom Wooton's, uh, comment, you know, 2.6 miles, um, away from any other service delivery, um, that we provide for public works particularly. It would be the similar distance as it relates to fire and police. Uh, the cost, um, of services is greater than, um, the rate of return we would receive substantially. Um, also, this particular site is outside, um, our joint planning area that we'll be discussing here momentarily in the next item. Um, and, um, if we adopt the interlocal would be a site that would, we would typically not annex, um, under our agreement with the county. So it would be the city manager's recommendation, um, that we do not move forward with the, um, annexation, but allow access to sewer so the development can move forward.
Thank you. Anything from counsel?
Um, I just have a comment. I just think that, um, I'm glad that we're doing these analysis. When you put the facts up on the screen, it really helps make these decisions very clear for us. And also, we have heard loud and clear that, um, our community values rural farmland and, um, especially rural areas of the county. And so our commitment has been that we are trying to avoid development in that area and allow the county to make those decisions. Um, that also allows county voters to feel like they have a choice in, um, who is representing them and where their neighbors are. And so thank you for doing that analysis and, uh, can.
You want to make a motion?
You want to do it, Gina?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, I move council direct staff to not move forward in reviewing the annexation petition submitted by Simple Life Farm at Flat Rock LLC. The subject property will remain under Henderson County's zoning jurisdiction. I further move that city sewer service may be extended to the subject property.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of not moving forward, but allowing extension of the sewer to this property, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries and, uh, so it is back with the county. Thank you. All right, next is the interlocal agreement that was mentioned a couple of times. All right.
Mayor Bolt, members of city council, um, at your, um, seats and previously been emailed to you, uh, proposed interlocal agreement, um, between, um, city of Hendersonville and Henderson County. I'll remind the council, give you a little bit of history. Um, in, uh, June, um, June 16, 2025, the city council and the board of commissioners, uh, approved proposed substitute language to Senate bill at the time, um, Senate Bill 69, um, that, uh, put forth an agreement between the city and county. Um, that particular bill, uh, did not move forward and the language in that bill was stripped out and go to the, the general assembly website now, you'll see that bill has nothing to do with, uh, the city of Hendersonville or Henderson County. So at this point, there is no legislation, um, moving forward as it relates to, um, the agreement between the city and county. Also, since that time, we've had conversations with our local delegation, um, particularly, um, our local delegate, particularly Representative Balcom and Senator Moffett, um, about any concerns they have, um, regarding the proposed language that, uh, was proposed. They do have some concerns, um, uh, related to, um, city, um, giving up, um, its authority as it relates to zoning control and also, um, their provision to ask to change the down zoning provision. Um, uh, both of those provisions are provisions they would not like to move forward in those conversations with, with the city. Um, after those conversations, there was a, uh, interlocal agreement that was presented to us by Henderson County, um, that included, uh, much of the language that was in the, uh, substitute, um, language that was in the bill, Senate Bill 69. We have reviewed that, but following our conversations with our local delegation and other stakeholders in the community that have, um, expressed concern about the devil and the details associated with, um, particularly the zoning piece, city staff has drafted, um, an alternative supplemental interlocal agreement between the city and county. Um, that is before you today. Um, it does, uh, remove the concerns that were expressed to us, particularly related to, um, zoning, city, uh, giving up their zoning authority, um, in the ETJ and, um, in our growth boundary. We are proposing a, uh, proposed planning area, a joint planning area with Henderson County. Um, and so I'll go through this, this kind of section by section, not explicit detail, but I'll, I'm going to go. The first piece is, um, our joint water sewer commission, um, proposal will remain exactly as was in the original substitute, um, bill, as well as within the county's, um, proposed interlocal agreement. We will set up a water sewer commission consisting of nine members. Um, that would be eight members and a chairperson. Um, it will function as we have discussed with the county, um, historically and, and move forward. Um, no, no changes there. Um, and continue to serve. Uh, we will, um, the second, um, piece of this, uh, we will continue with, uh, water and sewer rate, uh, um, bringing the differential together, basically, um, equalizing rates, um, as we've been doing and as we have committed. There's no change there. The city will continue to equalize water rates, um, at 5% a year and begin equalizing sewer rates, um, for our inside and outside at 5% a year. So water's a little ahead of that, but we will continue to do that. Um, also, we will, um, ask our general assembly, uh, members to allow us to, to waive or discount water sewer fees associated with, um, affordable housing and also, um, ask for them to, um, allow us to waive system development charges and connection fees for economic development. Those would specifically have to be granted by our legislature, but we felt like it was best to put it in the interlocal. Uh, one, uh, significant change, um, from the interlocal that was presented by the county and in the substitute language was, as it relates to our establishing a joint planning area, instead of the city giving up our authority, um, for zoning, um, planning and zoning in our ETJ in this area, we would propose as an alternative, um, a joint planning area. Um, if Ms. Justice would put a map up, um, and we have, uh, established, um, a proposed boundary, uh, for the city, this joint planning area would do a number of things. The city and county would work together, um, to, um, in the ETJ and in this joint planning area to determine zoning that is best, um, for the city and the county in these areas. Uh, it would allow the, the county residents to have a say, um, in areas that we would have the opportunity to annex. Um, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. It would be a joint planning, um, commission. Um, it would be made up of nine individuals, uh, similar to the water sewer commission. Um, those individuals would come from our existing planning board for the city and the existing planning board for the county, plus one chair appointment that would be made by the mayor, um, and, uh, the chairman and county commissioner.
Is it nine or seven?
Yeah, you said, you said.
Seven.
I'm sorry, seven, I'm sorry. I was getting ready to say, stop and say, Angie, correct anything I got wrong. So it's seven instead of nine. Sorry, I apologize for that. Uh, so, uh, you would have seven members. Um, so that's right, three, three in one. Uh, that commission, um, first job would be to develop a joint land use map, uh, for this area, for the land, joint planning area that would be considered by the city council and the, and the county commission. Again, um, allowing, um, representatives from both organizations and both, uh, governments to, to work together to come up the joint planning, um, for this area, um, to take in considered urban, uh, desires as well as rural desires. So you have, uh, that joint planning there. Um, and also then that, that joint planning board would, would advise the county commission and the city council on any, uh, rezoning in that joint planning area, which is basically their ETJ. ETJ in the area along Tracy Grove and also Upper Grove. Their role to meet regularly to do that. We would, as was previously agreed, the city would not require any annexation to receive sewer service or any water sewer service outside of the joint planning area. So we would not require annexations and would make it available out there without annexation and within the joint planning area, as was previously agreed. Any existing development would not be required to annex to receive water or sewer service. Any new development in the joint planning area would be required to submit a petition for annexation for consideration and analysis in accordance with our existing policy. So any new development or any development where the value of the property was exceeds was increased by fifty percent or more. So very exactly how we had proposed it in the substitute language and the interlocal, the previous interlocals. We would also continue to move forward with negotiating with our fire districts. The fire districts, as was previously proposed, for areas outside the city where we satellite annex, we would in annex, we would negotiate a contract with our rural fire departments to protect their revenue stream in those areas. So that would continue to move forward as was previously proposed in the substitute language and and also the county's proposed interlocal. That is the that is that is the interlocal agreement that we put forward with you tonight. We feel like this is a reasonable approach. It is a change from the previous discussion, but because of the conversations we had, we think it is appropriate and is best for all parties involved, particularly a good agreement for the citizens of Hendersonville. So I stand by to answer any questions you may have regarding that or anything else related to this.
Any questions, comments?
Madam Mayor, there is one correction that I just caught that needs to be made. I apologize. In paragraph 10, it says that the staffing for the joint planning commission would be provided and paid for from the water and sewer revenues of city. That's a no, that's a mistake. It's because I copied and pasted that over from the water sewer commission. So you need to put a period after city in that last line and strike from water sewer revenues. Obviously, that's not intended. Thank you.
Angie, I just want to say thank you for the work that you've done on this. I know it has been like a ton of work dealing with just talking to the county and trying to make this agreement, please, all the parties involved. I know I particularly heard a lot of feedback with the previous interlocal agreement mentioning the Mud Creek Basin. Is there a way we could actually show the Mud Creek Basin map? Okay, so that the the previous map or the previous agreement actually referenced the Mud Creek Basin. And when we actually overlay the proposed boundary through there, I can completely understand why people in rural parts of the county were not happy and freaking out because that looks to me like the city has is attempting to not honor their commitment of not annexing out in the county. And so I that map is pretty glaring, I think. And we just want to help build faith and trust in the city that that is not our intent and our intent is to do best by the city, help address affordable housing issues, which I feel like this interlocal agreement helps address some of the affordable housing crisis that we're dealing with by specifically being able to work with our nonprofit partners, Housing Assistance is an example. Section three specifically addresses that. And then section four addresses a lot of the, I feel like, uncertainties where that we've had in economic development. And so I just think that this is a great agreement and it's a it's a good compromise for everybody involved. We have been at this for a lot of years. And I know that when we took a tour of the Winston-Salem Forsyth model for how they set up this joint water and sewer commission, they actually strongly encouraged us to have joint planning because then it's not a political game. It's just ran like a business and it's ran to be logical and use sound decisions. And and so it just kind of takes that the politics out of running a utility and a successful utility, which I think we have proven that we have done in all the years that we've been at it. And I think that this also just gives protections to our rural community, that we have no intent of annexing out in, you know, Edneyville or any of those areas. And so I I'm just very proud of where we've gotten. And I know that our state legislators have really wanted us to work on addressing this locally, and I think that this is the best way to to make that happen and get in given the feedback that they have given us as well. I think we have addressed everything. And Angie, you're, this is amazing. Thank you.
Any comments?
One more thing. I did have a couple people in the county approach me about if we could pull up the just the joint map again. There was confusion and maybe just misinformation that any of the area in green will just now be automatically annexed into the city. And that was a very, very large misunderstanding on I don't know how that came about. But that is only occurring, we are not just going to go out and annex a property. It's not happening. It's only if there is redevelopment or new development of a property. And the redevelopment has to be greater than fifty percent of the value of that property. And another thing to mention, we have areas in the community, in the county, with failing septic systems that are one hundred percent public health concerns and issues that the city has attempted to help solve with just running sewer to those developments with no annexation required for that because it's just the right thing to do is to help these neighborhoods that are older and need the assistance. And we want to continue being good partners to our neighbors in the county. And so that is, we we use these things on a case-by-case basis. And so when people are approaching us and they need help, I'm I'm pleased that we can continue doing that stuff, and it's the right thing to do. And and we are not requiring annexation to do that. We're just trying to be good neighbors and help our friends out.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just agree a lot lot of work back and forth with staff, with council and commission members, with our state legislators. And I seems to me as well that we've answered all their questions and tried to deal with all their concerns. Anyone else? Comments or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that city council approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Hendersonville and Henderson County.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of approving the interlocal agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it, motion carries. And we have approved it after all this time. All right. Okay. Mundane business here. Appointment to boards and committees. Appointment to the Environmental Sustainability Board.
We just have one one application, we have one open.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Yeah, I do have the one application. I was trying to see if it if it said somewhere if we had more than one opening.
Just one.
One application, one opening. Anyone wish to comment or make a nomination?
Madam Mayor, I move to appoint Joan Saki to the Environmental Sustainability Board, filling an unexpired term ending in June 2027.
Joan Saki has been nominated for the Environmental Sustainability Board. Are there further nominations? Not. Those who wish to appoint Joan Saki to the Environmental Sustainability Board for an unexpired term ending June 2027, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, eyes have it, motion carries, and Joan has been appointed. Thank you. City Manager's Report.
Mayor, Mayor Bolt, members of city council, just want to let you know that your contingency and adjustment report is in your agenda packet for July of 2025. Also, happy to announce that at your next meeting, second meeting of the month and going forward, we will be back in the operations center.
Yes, yes.
Richard Shook was here later and earlier, and he had to leave, but he has managed that project and that room is ready. We're doing the final kind of moving furniture around and things, final touches up, but you'll be back in your old council chambers, which I know we're all happy about. And we also will be able to do more public meetings there and those kind of things, so.
They'll be in new. We need to amend the regular meeting scheduled now for our second meeting and like tonight so you can meet, right? You said the second meeting in.
Yes.
Yes.
So this is their only opportunity.
Good point. Thank you. That's why we have a city.
So we just need a motion to amend the regular scheduled meetings to the city operations center for the rest of the year.
I don't want to talk. Madam Mayor, I move that we move the location of our city scheduled city council meetings to the city operations.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of moving our meetings back to the operations center for the rest of the year, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it, motion carries. All right.
And and the last thing, Mayor, just before we get there, there is no need for a closed session, so.
Okay. All right. In that case, oh, council comments? Anyone have anything they want to bring up?
I just want to thank the city staff for the splash day at the Putt-Putt. It was epic day, and we ran out of food and hot dogs and just it was such a great day and the kids had so much fun and people were begging for more. Dun, dun, dun.
All right.
Thank you. Yes, thanks to staff for working that up. Water is not quite what we expected, but that's the way it goes. Can't can't do anything about that.
Well, we have mainly an outdoor water activity for rain to come.
Okay. Anything else anyone has?